Back on.
We got some other room. This is nice.
What?
I said, we got some other room over here. It's nice.
I gotta share this thing on this Zoom. It's even on the Zoom. Ready, Jac? Good, one second, sorry.
Thanks, John.
Good evening and welcome to the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Roseland Governing Body. Adequate notice of meetings been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act at the date, time, and location meeting were included in annual meeting schedule, posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and filed in the office of the Borough Clerk. For those attending tonight's meeting via Zoom, the agenda and any of the relevant documents can be found on the Borough's website attached to the meeting notice posted in the news and announcement section. During the meeting, announcements made prior to the two public comment periods, anyone who wished to make a public comment via computer will be instructed to use the raise your hand icon. And anyone wishing to make a public comment via telephone will be instructed to dial star nine at the appropriate time. For those in attendance in person or remotely, please provide your name and address when selected. If you are eligible for Daniel's law, please just announce your name. Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mayor Spango.
Present.
Mr. Barty.
Here.
Mr. Brant.
Here.
Mrs. Parati.
Here.
Mr. Schroder.
Here.
Mrs. Toley. Mr. Trillo.
Here.
Please rise to the flag salute.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, on the agenda, we have our first round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us telephonically, press star nine. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon.
Hey, how are you?
How are you?
I'm good.
My name is Mark Binkowitz. I live at twenty-nine Third Avenue. Uh, I've been a resident like thirty-five years. And my question is about the Desco Bark. What are we doing with it? Like, for two years, it's been unusable.
It's being renovated.
The play section? Yeah.
Yeah, that's the last piece.
That's the last piece that's gonna start this spring.
Yeah, we should get all this stuff this spring.
Cause like, last two and a half years, it's been pushed back and back.
No, it wasn't. But we pulled everything out of there, all the playground equipment in the fall. And I believe Joe Pomonti said in the, by April, they're gonna start, right? They're gonna start in April, hoping the kids will be in there in the, in the summer.
I got five grandkids. I can't fit them in a car.
It was done in phase. So that's what happened, is they did the basketball court first, then they just did the pavilion. And the last piece was, you know, we got as much life out of the playground as possible, and now we're switching to that.
That'll be done by late spring this year.
Yeah. I mean, thank you. Thank you.
You got it.
Do you want Barney back?
We have Barney.
We gotta put him somewhere.
We have to put Barney back.
My grandkids, and they go, Papa, can we go in the park? And I said, we can't, because we're dangerous.
Yeah.
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 Well, you could teach him to play pickleball.
Thank you.
Bye, Mark.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Dan Savante leaves on for the great township of Roseland. On behalf of our county executive, we have some new announcements, exciting ones. Number one, this is county golf course, courses are open. That's Hendris Golf Course and Burn Golf Course. Weekwake is currently under renovation. We anticipate a July opening of this year. We know spring's around the corner with our annual Cherry Blossom Festival kicking, kicking the spring off. Our event starts on Saturday, April fifth. It's a competitive bike race from the hours of seven AM to one PM in the division of the Oval Division of Branch Brook Park. On April sixth is our Cherry Blossom ten K run, which will take place at ten AM. Currently, we have a close to nine hundred runners registered for the event. Family Fun Day, which takes place down at the Potential Grove on the twelfth of April. That is from eleven AM to three PM. Our Bloom Fest will take place in the Oval, which is the Northern Division of Branch Brook Park from the hours of eleven to five PM. In addition, we do have seasonal positions available uh, at the South Mountain Recreation Complex, which will include the zoo, mini golf, our boating, and general maintenance of the site. Those that are interested can go on the website, www.turtleneckzoo.com for more information. Do you have anything you can take back to the county executive?
Nope. Thank you. Our seniors are gonna be down at the Cherry Blossom Festival.
Yes, they have a date.
So, thank you for always accommodating us.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, next on the agenda, we have two appointments to the Affordable Housing Board. Uh, Gloria Chamberlain and Claudia Reese. If there are no objections, do we have a motion to move these two appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Next, we have a presentation. Um. Podium? Um, Tom.
Go ahead.
Lo- loyakopal? Uh, how do you pronounce it? Tom, from, from the Greek church? No, but how do you pronounce Tom? Bakapla, he made it easy. Um, every, last year, Tom contacted us and wanted us to light up Borough Hall blue for Greek Independence Day. Um, last year was the first year we did it. Uh, he reminded us this year, and we have a very large Greek population in Roseland that balloons on Sundays because of the beautiful church that they built uh, in, in town where they consolidate another church. So, on March twenty-fifth, uh, the Borough of Roseland will recognize Greek Independence Day, the two-hundred-and-fourth anniversary of such. Uh, we have a proclamation that's here that's got way too many Greek names in for, for me to read. Um, but I wanted to recognize them. We have a member of their congregation that wants to come forward and say a few words. And we're very proud and honored to be able to honor Greek Independence Day and look forward to doing so every year.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It's great.
I'm Bill Dajanas, the president of Saint Nicholas, Constantine, and Helen. We thank you for the proclamation and the honor very much so. We thank you for your continued partnership and helping us and always being there and being like members of our church. Uh, it's truly, uh, I've been the treasurer for seven years. I've been on the board from Saint Nicholas Church, twenty-five years old in Newark. And I merged the parish with Jimmy Sumus. I was the chairman of the merger committee. Um, back in the day, Paul Jemis was our president in Newark, and we couldn't be in a better town. We feel like it's home, and we can't thank you enough for all you do. Thank you very much for the proclamation. Great honor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Ry? Can you take a picture so we can put it in the mirror?
You know, Billy Dimitrakis? Billy Dee? Oh, he goes there. He's in spring. Yeah, comes back all the time, he says. He's the teacher in Newark, uh, principal at Branch Brook.
I used to go to the church with my grandfather.
In Newark, Saint Nicholas?
With my grandfather.
That's where I was married. My parents were married, and I was baptized there, and my children.
Oh, wow.
We had Father Luke's fifteen years.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The honor.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Great honor.
Thank you. Okay, uh, first on the, first on the agenda tonight, we have ordinance six dash twenty twenty-five. On first introduction, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending section two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Administration to add section seven entitled Rules of Order and Procedure at Meetings of the Borough Council.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Barty, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number six dash two thousand twenty-five will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is introduction of ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash four of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Use of Outdoor Facilities to Add Tier One Nonprofit Athletic Groups and Associated Fees.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none.
Ordinance number seven dash two thousand twenty-five will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Next is ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Calendar year two thousand twenty-five ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA forty A calling four dash forty-five point one four.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Barty, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none.
Ordinance number eight dash two thousand twenty-five will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance nine dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Administration to amend section two dash fifty-one entitled Senior Transportation.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance nine dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none.
Ordinance number nine dash two thousand twenty-five will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next, for public hearing is ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the replacement of the water main on Cooper Avenue for the water utility in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey appropriating seven hundred thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of seven hundred thousand dollars bonds or notes of the borough to finance the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Brant, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number ten dash two thousand twenty-five will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next is introduction of ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of automated license plate readers in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey appropriating fifty-six thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of fifty-three thousand two hundred dollars bonds or notes of the borough financing its part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none.
Ordinance number eleven dash two thousand twenty-five will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Ordinance twelve dash twenty, twelve dash twenty twenty-five, we are pulling, I'm pulling off the uh, agenda. It was an ordinance that we kind of rushed to get onto the agenda that has to do with e-bikes. Um, we've had an issue um, coming, since it's gotten warm of kids riding electro, electric bikes uh, in our complexes uh, on the sidewalk on some of the fields. And I've had a conversation with multiple parents, boosters who are here all the time working about how we have issues with these e-bikes, and somebody's gonna get hurt, whether it's somebody enjoying our parks, a little kid, someone riding the bike, an older person, they're zipping through the whole areas. And a couple hours after that conversation happened, unfortunately, we had a bad accident on Friday night. Uh, a child on an e-bike collided with a motor vehicle. Um, the child wound up having to have surgery. The child is okay. I was on the phone with the mother actually before this meeting. Um, but we're committed to having an ordinance that is gonna prohibit the kids or anyone from using these bikes. There's all different levels of them. Some of them go way above just an electronic, electric bike. They're fifty, sixty miles an hour. We wanna make sure that the people enjoying our facilities are safe. Wanna make sure the kids on these bikes don't get hurt, and just the general public can enjoy all the wonderful things that we've built and continue to expand upon. So, we're gonna pull this ordinance. Uh, Joni, our council, is going to work with the police department. I know Wall Township has a very thorough and comprehensive ordinance um, to ensure the safety of everyone that's enjoying our park. So, that's why we're pulling it. But it's very, very important, and we ask the parents and the, of, of the kids with, with the e-bikes, just to actually look and see how fast they think go before they just, the kids just take them out and ride them. We're afraid that somebody's gonna get seriously hurt, and unfortunately, it happened on Friday night. So, we're pulling this. It'll be on a future meeting. It'll be a little bit more comprehensive than just, um, say, e-bikes. And we're doing it to ensure the safety of everyone at our outdoor facilities. Anyone have anything to add about the e-bikes before we move on?
No, if they are, I think if the children are riding them to make sure they have a helmet, and the parents need to beware that if they overcharge them, they can catch fire, so it's a safety issue. So, just, I, I urge the parents to really look into them before they purchase them for their kids.
Understand what they can do.
Yes.
How fast they go.
Totally.
Next, if no one has anything further on the e-bikes, we have ordinance, public hearing on ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending section two dash seventeen of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland and tart entitled Department of Administration. Section eight dash three entitled Department of Construction Code Enforcement and Inspections.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none may have a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
Barty, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending section two dash seventeen of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Department of Administration. Section eight dash three entitled Department of Construction Code Enforcement and Inspections.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five?
So.
Second.
Yeah.
Parati, Barty, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance three dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next is ordinance four dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter Two Administration, Article Six Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Offices to add new section two dash fifty entitled Safe Walking and Cycling Advisory Committee.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance four dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Brant, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance four dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none may have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Trillo, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter Two Administration, Article Six Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Offices to add new section two dash fifty entitled Safe Walking and Cycling Advisory Committee.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance four dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Brant, Parati, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance number four dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is ordinance five dash twenty twenty-five for a public hearing. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter Fourteen entitled Parks and Recreation to establish an outfield banner sponsor fee.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance five dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Barty, Schroder, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance five dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none may have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Barty, Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter Fourteen entitled Parks and Recreation to establish an outdoor banner sponsor fee.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance five dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Barty, Brant, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance five dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda, we have the introduction of the twenty twenty-five municipal budget. I'm gonna turn it over to, over to Councilman Barty for our PowerPoint presentation, and I get to be a spectator.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, trying to get it up on the screen. Neil? Got it. Thank you, Neil. All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, we're gonna be doing our twenty twenty-five budget introduction presentation tonight. So, uh, before we start, I'd like to thank Maureen Chumakis and our, uh, mayor and council for attending four meetings, going through all the details of, of all the capital projects, all of the department head, all the department budgets, uh, and coming up with a very fiscally responsible, uh, budget. So, we will, um, there's your, there's your governing body and administration. Also, thank you to all of the department heads as well for, uh, for taking the time, going through the due diligence, and coming, like I said, coming through with very responsible, uh, very responsible spending. So, the goal of our administration and our budget, um, these goals really do remain the same, you know, keeping Roseland affordable through responsible spending, keeping Roseland residents informed through increased transparency, communication, and resident involvement. Uh, reinvigorating, keeping Roseland safe through investing in our community and infrastructure, and reinvigorating our borough through improved community events and updated parks and facilities. Twenty twenty-four, um, we, the taxes increase only twen- uh, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents on the average home. Uh, we achieved the lowest tax rate in Essex County at a, uh, one dollar and, uh, eight and a half cents. Uh, we completed the Harrison Complex Turf Fields, uh, and New Snack Shack as we continue to invest in our facilities, and had a eleven point one four increase in our fund balance going into twenty twenty-five, which really put us in a nice position uh, to, uh, to really get, to have a, a lower, a very low tax rate for twenty twenty-five, which we'll show in just a second. And we kept our tax collection rate up very high, again, at ninety-eight point nine one percent. So, going into twenty twenty-five, uh, our total budget for, uh, for this, for this year is seventeen million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and three cents. Uh, our tax increase, uh, of this, for this year is point nine seven percent, again, under one percent, at a, uh, average cost of, or average increase of thirty dollars and seventy cents per household for the municipal portion, municipal proportion, portion of the tax bill. Um, we continually, are continually working to keep our taxes affordable here in Roseland. Um, the amount to raise, uh, that raised by taxation is, uh, below the two percent cap. Uh, we've had a cancellation of bond ordinances, uh, which were used to reduce our debt service. Uh, we, we worked very, very closely with the department heads to ensure not quality programs and services with little to no budgetary increase, right? So that, that's a very important point. And just for comparison, I mean, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of, um, stats in yet from the other towns, but uh, Essex County, uh, is, uh, one point nine nine percent. Livingston is a, is a two and a half percent increase. West Caldwell is three point six eight, and Oakland is introduced four point three percent. So, we are well below uh, many neighboring, uh, towns, uh, in our, in our tax increase. So, we should all be very proud of this. Um, all right, tax bill. So, um, tax bill, municipal portion, uh, is, uh, about, I, I, everything about, you know, is, is pretty close to around a quarter, but twenty-three point nine percent, um, and an average tax bill based on, uh, twenty twenty-four numbers for the school system uh, is around eleven thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and thirty-nine cents, based on an average home value of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, uh, in, uh, in Roseland. Uh, Maureen will take us through how our tax dollars are spent.
Just a couple of highlights on how our tax dollars are spent. Um, our statutory expenditures actually decreased by a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um, we were able to increase our capital improvement fund to bring it up to the levels they were before by budgeting uh, two hundred thousand dollars a year, and we were able to increase our reserve of tax appeals, bringing it up to the levels we have, uh, previously budgeted for. Keeping the budget still with only a point nine seven, uh, percent increase.
All right. And then our revenues?
Our revenues, we are, um, allowed to anticipate what we collected last year. We feel confident, um, with the numbers that we put forth as revenues. Um, one of the large numbers, uh, was uniform construction code fees. And what we anticipated this year, we have already collected, so we know that we will be, uh, ahead of the game.
Okay, thank you. So, just a couple of highlights from, from each, uh, each of our departments. Uh, we continue to invest in public safety. Uh, you know, including hiring two new police officers, promoting two officers to the rank of sergeant. Uh, we've, uh, purchased automated license plate readers. You could actually saw, and even, um, yeah, as, as part of this introduction tonight, uh, one of, one of our ordinances was actually purchasing these. New ambulance for the volunteer first aid squad, uh, command vehicle for the volunteer fire department, and flashing pedestrian crossing traffic signs. These are all things that are planned for, uh, planned for, actually happened, but last year, summer plan for this year. Continue to invest in our community, so we've done, uh, improvements to the Bond Forest Park, new basketball court, uh, Phase Three of the Tedesco Park, as we heard earlier. There's new playground equipment that's gonna be going in mid-April. Um, and then we are planning for, um, the, the new, the new playground equipment at Bond Forest in twenty twenty-six. Um, and something that's very, you know, very near and dear to this council, and the mayor is our SCRAM program, which is being reinvented once again uh, here, uh, in Roseland with a full-day program. Uh, investing in our community events, a lot of emphasis here. We have our Easter egg hunt and bunny hop trail, which is coming up. Uh, community picnic and mayor's trophy game, uh, increasing the frequency and variety of Roseland senior society events that are happening, you know, very, very frequently. You see more and more every year. Uh, our summer concert series, uh, has been, has been off to, it will be off to a great start, you know, um, three, three concerts this year, right? Uh, National Night Out was something that, what happened, uh, that started last year. Unfortunately, the weather, uh, didn't cooperate. Hopefully, it's better this year. Uh, Roseland Day continues to be a very, a very popular event. Um, Santa's arrival and hometown holiday celebration, uh, continues to get many upgrades every year, and then our menorah lighting ceremony as well. So, there's always something going on, um, you know, on in Roseland on the weekends, and, you know, thanks to our mayor, and thanks to the council, and thanks to our rec director, um, who, for, for doing such a great job. Investing in our community infrastructure, uh, we have a new senior community center coming, uh, in fall twenty twenty-five right across the street at, uh, Nineteen Harrison, where the, uh, all-purpose room used to be. Uh, so we're looking forward to that. We have our road resurfacing project, which happens every year. Um, several streets that, that are, that are being, um, that are being paved, and we have, um, Chalk Tower Way and eighty P Boulevard were paid by a DOT grant. Um, and, uh, as far as paving, same, um, we have a whole bunch here, one, two, three, four, seven roads being, uh, being paved this year. And then we have the, finally, the Fullerton Brook Foot Bridges being completed, um, by the spring of twenty twenty-six due to, um, extensive review by the DEP. Is that date right?
It was, yes.
I thought it was twenty, I thought that was.
No, I did have a conversation with our, our one again this afternoon, and DOT, they need environmental, they need to go.
This was supposed to be this year.
I suppose this year.
Yeah, that's.
No.
I caught myself as soon as I saw that.
He said it'll take about eight months to get the permitting. Love government.
That's unfortunate, but, uh, but thank you. All right, so the bottom line, you look at our, the way you calculate our tax rate, you take the total appropriations, you subtract out the library tax, which gives you amount to be raised by taxation. You take the amount to be raised by taxation, you divide it by total assessed valuation of property in Roseland, and multiply by a hundred, gives us a tax rate of port, point four nine eight. And then we take that point four nine eight, and that's what gives you, you multiply that by the average assessed value, and that gives you the average municipal tax. Uh, with, as we mentioned earlier, um, point nine seven percent increase, thirty dollars and seventy cents a household. Um, and then you can see that from, from last year, tad bit higher than last year, lower than twenty twenty-three, but all, all right in that range of, um, you know, under one to one point four seven. That's all we have. So, thank you. Thanks for everyone's participation, and thanks for passing over, or we'll be introducing a very responsible budget.
Thank you, Councilman Barty. Thank you, Maureen. Thank you to governing body. Um, to have a tax rate under one percent, considering all the facilities and the services. To have a tax rate under one percent, considering all the facilities and the services that we provided, the average home is going up eight cents a day. It's, it's a testament to Maureen. This just doesn't happen overnight. She's at this all year, and it's a testament to this governing body that they continue to be responsible and basically set a benchmark for other neighboring municipalities to, to, we're now the example of to provide these services and keep the taxes so low, and it's, it's attributed to everyone's hard work. It's also attributed to all the volunteers we have in town, like our fire department and our first aid department, who make it, make us able to have such a low tax rate because of, because of their volunteerism. So thank you to everyone on the council. Thank you to Maureen. Thank you to Councilman Barty and the council for, for putting forth such a responsible budget. That being said, our first resolution tonight is resolution one ten dash twenty twenty five. Mr. Watkins, please read the resolution by title only.
Mayor, we have resolution number one ten dash two thousand twenty five approving the introduction of the two thousand twenty five municipal budget.
Is there a motion to introduce the two thousand twenty five municipal budget?
So moved.
Second.
Barty Barant, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Budget will be posted on the borough's website, and the notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing on the budget will be held on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda, we have resolution one 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 dash twenty twenty five approving the March twelfth bill list. Everyone receive the bill list for questions, concerns, and or recusals? If there are none, do we have a motion to approve the bill list?
So moved.
Second.
Parati Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Next, we have resolutions one through twenty-two by agenda number, by resolution number one hundred and twelve dash twenty twenty five through one hundred and thirty-three dash twenty twenty five. Questions, concerns, and or recusals for any of these resolution numbers, resolutions, I'd like to move them in their entirety.
Mayor, what is resolution one thirty-two for screen printing for twenty twenty five? What is that, what is that for?
They actually this year went out for, they didn't bid, but they got quotes for the whole year. So we know who our vendor is and.
It's for uniform.
Oh, oh, okay.
She's going to do soccer and basketball.
Okay.
So we don't have delays when we go through the sports?
In sports.
We're going to put it out all, not, not by season, but in its entirety, so things will move.
Because we don't see it together like that.
And I'm really glad she got it because they happen to make great uniforms.
Oh, that's great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
She's a local, too, they're right in Fairfield.
I figured you would.
Any other questions or concerns or recusals from the resolutions? If then, if we, if there are none, can we please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Next, we have three things on the consent agenda. One is a training, two is to accept the resignation of Janelle Cerisi and Renee Reynolds from our borough employees. Anyone have questions, concerns, or comments? If not, we'll take a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Barty Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Like to wish Janelle and Renee good luck in their new positions. We're sorry to see them go, but we never ever would want someone to better themselves and for them and their family. So good luck to both of them. Mayor's report, Councilman Trillo, I'm sure you're going to go over opening night?
Oh, I can.
Okay. Because it's going to be, we have, our April first caucus meeting is going to be held here in this room, because we're going to do a, it's Autism Awareness Month, and the police department is going to do a special presentation, and we'd like to do it here in chambers. I assume that's enough time to notice, Jacque, okay? And yesterday, we set a date for the mayor's ball for twenty twenty five. It's going to be October twenty fourth. The mayor's ball is a function that Mayor Pecio's here. He's the one who spoke to me about it many years ago to bring it back. This year, the, the beneficiaries are going to be the Roseland Boosters, who approved it last night at their meeting, and the Roseland Police Foundation. We look forward to their, their helping with this. We also look forward to it being a very successful night. That's going to be October twenty fourth at the Hanover Manor. Besides that, I'll leave opening night to you, Councilman Trillo. I have nothing. Committee reports, Finance Administration, Councilman Barty.
So nothing else to add tonight, Mayor? Thank you.
Thank you. Recreation, Councilman Trillo?
So opening night is what Mayor Spango referred to, April eleventh, right? Friday, April eleventh. New uniforms, new Little League, so a lot of energy around it. We're going to do it a little different than we have in the past. It'll be, instead of being a, I think it used to be Sunday usually, right? Or was it a Saturday we used to do it on?
It was a Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday afternoon. It'll be a Friday night. We'll have games going on. Immediately following, Rosen versus Rosen games for the older kids. And listen, it's baseball season. It's easy to get excited for baseball season this time of year, spring weather and everything else. So we hope as many people as possible come out. Details will follow as we get closer.
Thank you.
Do you think to add, Mr. Mayor?
Nope.
All right. I have nothing else for recreation besides play ball.
Oh, Easter.
Oh, uh, what's the date on the Easter event?
April.
Thirteen.
Hold on.
Thirteenth, I think, Sunday the thirteenth, right?
It's before, yeah, which is going to be on the turf this year. They're doing, they're trying to reinvent it, make it a little bit more modern and add some things to it. So April thirteenth will be the Easter egg hunt and pictures with the bunny. Correct. Councilman Schroder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Update for the municipal youth guidance, high school students. And they have a few events coming up, excuse me. They'll be helping out the, with the egg hunt on the seventeenth, which is great, to see them always participating. And they'll be volunteering at a community food bank at Hillside May seventeenth. So they continue to do some great work. That completes my report on that section, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. They do do great, and that's a good example for them going through life to give back to the community at a young age. Public Works Engineering, Councilman Barant?
I'm excited that we passed the ordinance for the Safe Walking and Bicycle Advisory Committee. We so far have received eight applications from residents who are interested in joining. We're still waiting some more. So it's still open if anybody's interested in, in joining the committee. I think we're looking to start and have our first meeting sometime, probably at the end of April. So we will be accepting applications through April first, tentatively. The borough has received our JMR speed monitoring device. We will be working with the North Call Police Department for training. So we will coordinate that. And then the Lincoln Street Speed Study is scheduled to occur the first week of April with the start date, excuse me, start date of March thirty first, and then running for the first week of April. And then that street shall be paved shortly thereafter. That's all I have.
Thank you. Public safety.
Thank you, Mayor. On tonight's agenda, we accepted a donation from the Roseland Police Foundation. I would like to thank the committee and Tom O'Byrne for their generous donation. The money went to purchase live active shooter training kits. And this allows our officers to switch out some of their, to switch out the barrel of their gun, to, to use a soap pod, and it allows them to do active training in real time, and no one gets hurt. So we want to thank them for that.
They still hurt, but not as.
Well. And it's not, it's, it's a soap pod, not a paintball pod. So it's a little less, but it's still, but they won't get hurt. So. I would also like to congratulate the following officers for an internal commendation from Lieutenant Ballard, and they are Sergeant Williams, Officer Lupo, Officer Gonzalez, and Officer Bell. They went above and beyond duty, the call of duty, while responding to a call at Dr. Kerner's residence. I would like to read the letter that was sent to us by Mrs. Kerner. Dear Director Toffey, last week on the morning of February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, my dearest husband, Robert Kerner, died in his sleep. I phoned the Roseland Police and immediately Sergeant Williams, Officer Lupo, Officer Gonzalez, and Officer Bell responded to my tearful call. They were extremely professional, competent, and caring, and carried out their duties in an efficient yet compassionate manner. I will always be grateful for the kindness and empathy they showed me in my time of overwhelming grief. A credit to the Roseland Police Department. They should be highly commended for their professionalism, courtesy, and compassion. I was greatly appreciated and should be, it was greatly appreciated and should be acknowledged. In close, please find my donation of two hundred and fifty dollars in the memory of my wonderful husband, Dr. Robert Kerner. And that was signed by Ms. Lynn Kerner. The mayor and council would like to offer our deepest sympathies to Mrs. Kerner. I just think it's a testament to our police department and our police officers that we hire here. I want to thank them and congratulate them.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toley is not here tonight. Our thoughts and prayers with her. I think her husband's coming home from the hospital tonight, so our thoughts are with her. I do know that she gave something to Councilman Schroder to read. Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Announcement on behalf of Councilwoman Toley. The Beautification Committee is having their first meeting tomorrow night to plan spring decorations. Furthermore, there's an opening for one new member on the Beautification Committee. For those, if interested, please complete the citizens' interest form on the borough website, I believe, and send it in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else from committee reports from anyone? There are none. Next, we have our approval of minutes of our March fourth and fifth caucus and executive session meeting minutes with Councilman Barty recusing himself. Have everyone received the minutes for questions, concerns, and recusals? We take a motion to approve them, please.
So moved.
Second.
Barant Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We have the approval of our budget meeting minutes from our March eighth meeting. There's no questions, concerns, or recusals, and everyone received it. We'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Parati Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, we have our second round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon. If you're with us telephonically, press star nine.
William Tedesco, twenty meter port. Maybe I'm missing something or whatever, but I just want to ask you about when you, introduction of ordinances. I can't find them online. Is it online beforehand or no?
No, not until after they're introduced.
All right. That, to me, you should have it beforehand, because a lot of times, you know, you start at seven o'clock and boom, I can't even read the ordinances. So I think you should put them online. I know the county does, and whatever, so we can see what it is. So if we're against it, we could tell you we're against it before you introduce it and tell you why. It maybe might change your mind. It's just a comment and whatever. That's how I feel, you know, because I'd like to know what's, what they are before, because I'll be honest with you. I didn't know what the ordinance number six, two hundred, about the, the rules of order and all that, you know? I mean, I read it. Thank God I had more time, and I understand it better, you know? Because it was something I didn't like. I would be up here telling you why I didn't like it, and hopefully you wouldn't introduce it because my comments might have made a difference, you know? Because I always believe in free speech, you know, and there's some things I like about it and some things I don't, but I'm just telling you. So if you can do it online beforehand, that we could read it, it'd make it easier for the public if anything they want to say, not on only this or whatever, so we can understand it.
Very fair point. I just checked with Johnny to see if it's permissible on the administration committee. We'll review it and come back to the council. You make, it makes perfect sense.
Yeah. I mean, I know the county does it, you know, whatever. All right? Thank you.
Got it.
Any other member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon. If you're with us telephonically, press star nine. I got the thumbs down from either Ryan or someone else. There's no other action to be taken by the governing body. We'll take a motion for adjournment.
So.
So moved.
Second.
Barty Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you.
No.
Couldn't see Neil. Neil's, I'm used to a big girl.
Because your hands aren't very big, Neil.